Come back, everyone. Call the meeting to order at seven o'clock if we can stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, correspondence, Brian.
Good evening, everyone. We have kind of a large correspondence folder this evening for you. So we have a number of cards that were received to the board, so we'll let you open those. We have a conceptual design from the town of Goffstown for an application for an extension on Acorn Drive for your FYI. That's in the vicinity of Mountain View. We have a letter from the Tri-County Music Honor Society thanking GHS. We have a publication. If you didn't hear this summer, Mrs. Milligan, our principal at Mountain View Middle School, went over the edge. This is the thing, that you rappel down a giant building in downtown Manchester. And she did this for the Friends of Annie. It was called "Over the Edge." We'd like to thank Mrs. Milligan for putting her life in peril to raise money for this important organization, as well as a waiver from the New Hampshire Education Department. I'll talk about that a little more when I give my superintendent's report. And lastly, they did a musical this summer, and they did a sensory-friendly showing that was really pretty incredible. So we have a little information for you about that as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, commendations, good news. Wendy, you want to start with anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to remind everybody at home to be watching for school messengers and newsletters about open houses coming up in September and October, and then our open facilities that we have going on at our elementary and middle school for parents to be able to come in and see. I also thought I'd mention that this summer, we ran free CPR courses for students in grades seven through 12 here in Goffstown. We were able to get a grant through Title IV. We had more than 75 students able to get certified in CPR, which is pretty amazing. So we're really proud of that, so I thought I'd mention it.
Thank you, Wendy. Anyone else? Ginny?
I went to Shrek the Musical this summer. It was awesome. It was just too awesome, between the dancing, the music, the set design.
And Brady McCann.
And Brady McCann.
He's not here tonight.
He's not here. Did an awesome job.
He was amazing.
As always. And I always love these summer programs because there's people from everywhere coming in and helping our kids. And it was just so much fun. It really was. And then also, I have a thing from the beginning of the summer, where the Goffstown team won big at the New Hampshire Environment Fund. And there's a bunch of kids that did cool stuff.
Nice.
And won an award. And that's it.
Thank you, Ginny.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Nicole.
Yeah, I think this was the first year that Mountain View was doing cheer, and I've been seeing a lot of excitement around the cheer team. I think it's the Shearrest family and some others coaching that. So thank you, and good luck to all the new cheerleaders at Mountain View this year.
Thanks, Nicole. Anyone else? Go ahead, Ginny.
I also had on my note that I lost. Thank you to the Goffstown Library for all of the reading programs that they had, sign up for the kids to read and stuff over the summer, and the workshops that they had out on the lawn for kids. Had STEAM activities, reading activities, Lego activities, just cooking activities, just all sorts of really cool things to get kids in to read, you know, some good books over the summer and to keep their literacy skills up to date. So thank you for them for partnering with us to help kids during the summer.
Awesome. Thank you, Ginny. Anyone else? Commendations, good news? All right, moving on to public comment. Is there a public comment tonight? No? Okay. Just here to... Oh, you did want to say something? So you just sit at the end there in front of the microphone? Yes. And you would just state your name and address for the record?
Yep. Amy Huntsman, Sixth Barnard Lane. I wanted to say thank you to the school board and everybody involved at the SAU who put on the middle school camp, the theater camp, musical theater camp. My daughter, she hated the first day, but then she ended up loving it. And she was fantastic, and now she wants to do drama at middle school.
Nice.
Nice.
I appreciate that she had that opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No? All right, so I'm going to close public comment. We'll move on to the approval of the June 17, 2024, school board meeting minutes and retreat. And as you see, they're very long. Mrs. Moran did a great job.
As always.
If anybody saw anything, let me know, if not only in a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Nicole. Do I have a second by Ginny? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Moving on to committee report. Dan, you want to start out with the manifest?
Oh, yeah. It's going to take the finance, a good part of the meeting, sorry, guys. I'd like to offer a motion to accept the total manifest for June 18 through June 30, 2024 in the amount of $4,388,339.70.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline? Sorry.
That's all right.
Go ahead, Dan.
Because of the way teachers may be opt to get paid, whether it's under a 20 or 26 pay, you get a big check on your last day in June that takes care of your whole summer. So 3.735 million of that 4.388 was payroll and benefits. So the other 560-something thousand roughly were. For those 5,000 over, Boothby, these are... I'm going to read all the sped contracted services first. Boothby for $58.95. Home for Little Wanderers, $77.86. Nope, that's out of district services. It's still contract. The difference between contracted services and out-of-district services is the contracted services would be those that do one-on-one. Out-of-district is when we have to send a student someplace else outside of Goffstown. So Johnson ABA Consulting, $56.70. New Boston Physical Therapy, $7,200. Northeast Def, $5,055. Strong Foundations, $55.53. Is an out-of-state tuition. And Seven Hills for District Services, $36,927. We're going to see Seven Hills, if they bill us, every month because we have a student who's a 24/7 type of placement. Stratford Learning for Contracted Services, $5,079. The Durham School Services, our in-and-out-of-district transportation was roughly $142,000. General expenses for that period, Eversource, $6,500. I'm rounding now. Goffstown Truck Center for Regular Ed Transportation, $129,000. Manchester School District for the first semester and the Delta. The Delta is our agreement with Manchester's School of Technology, where if the state doesn't provide them with the funds that they were supposed to provide them, the remaining jurisdictions would have to share in the difference of the costs. And we did that. It's $200,614, first semester plus that Delta. And Sole Leslie Kidder for Legal Services, $5,330. And that's it for this particular manifest.
All right, anybody have any questions? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Go ahead, Dan.
So the second one would be for the month of July. I would like to offer a motion that we accept the manifest value of $3,761,686.34.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline? Okay, go ahead.
Payroll taxes, associated items like HSA contribution, New Hampshire Retirement System, Sped activity Durham School Services for Transportation, $93,200. Again, I'm going to round. Regional Services, out-of-district, $50,350. Seven Hills, out-of-district, $43,692. Bedford School District, $36,000. Nashua School District, $23,300. Out-of-district tuition to the Paul Center, $13,500. And Crest Collaborative, $12,560. General expenses, these are those that are 5,000 and above. We gave the Goffstown... It says curriculum consumables. That's not what it is. That's our CRF money that was voted on by the people. We collected that, and we are transferring it over to the trustees of the trust fund. SAU 19, we paid them the assessment of roughly $234,300. Pinnacle Public Finance, this is our energy efficiency project, annual cost, $167,300. Primex is our insurance, our annual of around $136,000. We did some flooring at Mountain View, Northeast Flooring, for $45,260. E-registration, the Student Info Systems to Power School, $37,700. Goffstown Truck Center. Field Trip Transportation for Athletics, $28,500. File Wave, this is the device management. This is one of the systems, we're probably going to talk a little bit about changing that for keeping our devices updated and knowing where they are and that kind of thing, $26,957. IXL Company, the Online Curriculum Resources, $22,600. Hooten Mifflin, student testing throughout the district, $21,400. Wally Computer for some IT equipment, $18,700. Xerox is our quarterly copier lease, $18,200. Certapro Painting, they did some maintenance at Mountain View, $8,000. Gutter Done. G-U-T-T-E-R-D-O-N. And so these are the gutters, not got. And you'd have to look at the word. MVMS Gutters, $63.40. New Hampshire School Boards Association, Ardu, $6,077. The Kiev Group, this is the student account software. It's six grand. We used to pay... What was the name of that company?
Quicken.
Quicken. And they got a little more expensive than this, and so we did this. Amazon for supplies and equipment, $58.50. Impact Fire Service, you'll see them. The Fire Alarm Sprinkler Maintenance and Repairs, $5,800. T&amp;M Concrete, Maple Ave Repairs, $54.50. Burnett Floors, the Goffston High School Gym Floor Refinishing, $52.50. And Rebus Associates Administrator Professional Development, $5,200. And we bought our... Bought. We licensed our point of sale for the food service at $71.28.
All right, thank you, Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you. Go ahead, Dan.
And we have our most current manifest from August 1 to August 22, 2024. So I'd like to offer a motion to accept that for a total manifest value of $1,363,942.46.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline? All right, go ahead, Dan.
It's because of August, we already made all the payments for salaries and everything. This is only $667,502 for salaries and benefits, $667,000. We paid Seven Hills for out-of-district services for $52,000. And the majority, another $555,000 for general expenses of $5,000 and above. SAU 19, $213,000. The second semester of last year to the Manchester School District for the Manchester School of Technology tuition, $73,000. The Power School Group, this is the Student Info Systems, this is the other one, $50,000. Sendgauge Learning Curriculum Consumables, $29,300. Eversource, $25,800 for electricity. IT Network Engineering from WEI, that's $23,700. Home Depot Pro, that's where we're doing our facilities, supplies, and equipment, $21,300. Blue and Services, the rooftop, this is the other half of the rooftop unit, the HVAC over at Mountain View, $20,645. Impact Fire, you've heard that company earlier. Fire Alarm Sprinkler Maintenance and Repairs, another $9,100. GHS Media Center Books from Barnes &amp; Noble for nine grand. The Dunbarton School District paid us twice, so we sent them the check back for $8,932. School Specialty School Supplies and Equipment, $82.46. Scenario Learning License for Training, this is a mandatory training platform, $7800. McGraw-Hill with some curriculum materials, $6,500. Crisis Prevention, that's the Administration Professional Development for new admin staff, $64.50. Security Prevention Maintenance and Repairs from Pellmax, $62.50. Some IT equipment from GovConnect, $55.40. Senovo Sound Amplification Systems at Maple Ave, $5,200. We bought some Agenda Books for Mountain View from School Data Books, $5,200. VMO Harris, which is our credit card, bought some books and professional development training supplies for $5,200. And Amazon, more books, equipment, and supplies for $5,000.
All right, thank you, Dan. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, Scott.
Sure, I wanted to let the board know, as I notified the A&amp;F Committee, that the board gives the superintendent and myself authorization with respect to budget transfers during the summer months. And in your packets, I put a whole slew of budget transfers that were done. I'm just going to kind of go over the general themes. So the first one that you'll see, those are budget transfers that total $113,572. And they really center around two things. One is the Wonders Reading Program. You'll recall that it was in the proposed budget as new spending. And because we got the default, we had to proceed with that reading curriculum. So I made budget transfers from regular ed transportation to fund that Wonders Reading Program across the schools that it impacts. The second one was really more of a cleanup. And that is with respect to the IXL online learning platform. And this was for proper coding. So essentially, that belongs to what's called electronic information, not in supplies. So that's just a correction. The next ones all deal with personnel. So you'll see that we were unable to hire a part-time physical therapist, and we transferred those funds to the contracted services line because we need to use a contracted service provider. We also made a movement of a special education teacher from Bartlett to Mountain View and transferred the funds there. As I mentioned to admin and finance, I don't always do this, but there was a lot of them. And I just try to keep away from all the negatives that you might see in the budget when we do, when positions do move. A couple of months ago, the superintendent mentioned to you that we will be repurposing that part-time, that half position for nursing, for IT help desk, and that transfer was made there. We also moved a position from Bartlett to Mountain View. That was an RBT, Registered Behavioral Therapist, I believe it is, right?
Technician.
Technician, I'm sorry. $64,533, those are the salary and benefits. There were some coding issues that were not right, the RBT being one of them. So it was in the 116 code, should be in the 112 code. And last but not least, we moved a power position from Mountain View to Bartlett, and that was $44,790. So again, this is for board and public's transparency in terms of kind of what we do. There will be more, and those that will be more will come to you. But this is kind of what we did, you know, over the summer. So that was it. I don't know if there's any questions on them, but it was really, this is just to inform you of what the actions that we took. Not hearing anything. I'll go on to the next topic, which is, they're kind of combined, the audit as well as the unassigned fund balance projection and the contingency fund. So you should have a memo that I prepared along with Doug Totten, who's our Assistant Business Administrator. And as I mentioned earlier, we did make it through the audit. And this was our first year without Laura really taking the lead. And Heather did a spectacular job, and I want to thank her. She worked her tail off, and we wouldn't have been able to do it, you know, without her. So it was all hands on deck, as Dan said. All of us participated. I did a lot, way more than I've ever done on the audit, and learned a ton from that process. But again, I want to give Heather all the credit. So what you'll note is that we had projected $1.7 million that would be returned to the taxpayers to offset taxes. At the end of our audit, Plodzik notified us that we would have an unassigned fund balance of $2,180,766. That's almost $500,000 more than what we had projected, which is a good thing. So as I put in my memo, right now, the board took a preliminary vote back in June at your last meeting to set aside $1.1 million in the contingency fund. Again, that's a balance sheet, it's not a separate bank account. And that represents 3.58% of allowable retained funds at that time. It's our recommendation, that of Doug, myself, and the superintendent, that you retain $1.3 million in the fund, which would be 3.72%. And the reason why $200,000 does not give you a big bump in your percentage is because you are allowed to retain more based upon that local assessment and the sweep that increased from the prior year. Please note, though, that if you did stay at $1.1 million, you would be funded at 3.15%. Just to reiterate for the board, the contingency fund is a balance sheet item. It is not a separate bank account. And it is used primarily to do two things. One, offset tax rate or level tax rate as best you can. And it's also used for emergency-type purposes. So unlike, say, five years ago, we had to have both the Commissioner of Education as well as the Budget Committee approve it. Now the school board must hold a public hearing to spend. But I believe that, you know, we have, there's been consensus amongst the board that it would be used for emergency-type purposes. So that being the case, if the board did proceed with $1.3 million in the contingency fund, I would let our auditors know that. We would adjust our financials and our DOE 25 accordingly. And then $280,766 would then go to offset the tax rate. So we would have almost $2 million would offset the tax rate. So that's kind of where we stand on that.
Go ahead, Ginny.
Scott. Because that's such a large amount of money going back to the taxpayers, could you just talk about why, you know, we have a budget and we have this much over? And that it's not over-budgeting, but it's a result of a lot of other things?
Well, right. So in terms of the over the budget, what's left over of the budget, that was, I think, around $1 million. And you might say to yourself, $1 million is a lot of money to all of us sitting around this table. We would love to have $1 million. However, when you have a $55 million budget, $1 million is not a tremendous amount to have. And I will share with you in New Boston, for an example, you know, a couple of out-of-district placements, and those things kind of get gobbled up, you know, rather quickly. But the majority of it comes from revenue that we did not anticipate or over-projections or over-collection of revenue. But when you look at it in the totality, we're spending like 90, almost 98% of our budget, a little bit more than that. So I would say to most people, if you look at your own household income, look at it as a percentage, not just as a million or $2 million. And we budget for this in anticipation that we would, we won't spend every penny of our budget. And we historically haven't spent every penny of our budget. And I think most of us have done, been pretty diligent, making sure at the end of the year, this isn't one of these things where, oh, we got all this money, let's go on a spending spree. We haven't been doing that.
I just think it's important for people to understand at the beginning of the budgetary...
You don't know what...
Time.
You're a long way off, too.
You know that this is where this money comes from and not just, we're bad budgeters.
Yeah, we should also keep in mind, too, that, you know, we budgeted quite a bit for transportation, right? We couldn't find bus drivers, and, you know, so that was an issue, too, where it was a couple hundred thousand dollars just right there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ginny. Anyone? Go ahead, Jared.
Scott, when you say over-collection of revenue, saying it differently would be we received additional grants we didn't anticipate. We got additional tuition to us from other districts and things like that. So when we talk about revenue, it's really, we're getting that money from either taxes or other taxes or from people sending additional kids to our school system.
You got it. I appreciate you putting it in more layman's terms.
And I would add to that, we're very conservative when we project those budgets. So we'd like to think maybe we're going to get X amount for revenue, but we tend to budget those very conservatively because sometimes the revenue that we think we're going to get from the state or other entities doesn't happen. So if we get more money, we collect more money in unanticipated revenue, great. That's going to be used as part of our fund balance that goes back to lower the tax rate.
Go ahead, Jared.
Just a separate question. So Scott, why are we raising the projected fund balance, I'm sorry, the contingency fund by $200,000? I didn't hear a clear understanding of why we need to do that.
For a couple of things. One, having those funds available allows you to offset taxes in future years. That's one. So let's say for an example that our revenue projections fall short, okay? Having that money as a buffer that you can then use that, those funds, you know, in that manner. So we were, and New Boston is a great example. Last year, they had $625,000 in their contingency fund, and then they lowered it to $400,000 because they knew at the time that we had a lot of out-of-district placements. So they were able to kind of balance that out. So it gives you a lot, it gives you a tool so that you could, if your revenues don't come to fruition or if you're looking to address the tax rate, you can do that. And then the second one is you have unanticipated expenses. So last year, we put it in our budget, but it was almost a half-million-dollar placement for a special education. If you did not have it, that it could be used on something like that. If you had an emergency whereby, you know, I talk a lot about, would it be a roof or we're talking about our cistern, et cetera, and you have to come up with $3, $500,000, you have that. So I think it's something that is a prudent thing to have. It's almost like having a reserve for yourself. Most people say to have a three, four-month reserve of cash. It's very similar.
Question to follow?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is the only reason why we, because we took a vote in June, we settled on an amount of money. I'm trying to understand what changed between June and now other than we have more money in our unreserved fund balance?
I think I've always...
Especially with our budgets getting voted down and people really, really are focused on the tax rate and not getting that money back.
Yeah, I think we don't have to set that amount of money in June, but we do because it lets the auditors know. I think the difference is, is that we had projected a certain amount of money. It came in greater than that. When you have an opportunity to set aside some funds for future emergencies, et cetera, and you have that ability, I think in this case, that's what I'm recommending, that pretty much 40% of that would go into that reserve, and the other 60% of it, of that overage, would go to offset taxes to the taxpayer. I think that's a fair balance. That's why I recommended it.
Are you good, Jared? Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Dan.
If it wasn't clear enough, I mean, there's also inflation. $1.1 million is what we set aside a year and a half when we set the tax rate in 2023. And so what we did, we just, it released, and we just renewed it for what it was. So there was a zero impact on anything we did. With inflation that has been going on for the last couple of years, this will have put the budget or the buffer in there. So, you know, you heard me read about the expenses that we were doing that out-of-state district, and that's roughly like $44,000 a month. And if one more placement happens, we're looking at another, almost close to half-million dollars. And with a default budget, if we don't have it, if we don't find it, we have to do it. There's not a choice. And so if we had to have a public hearing and dip into it, we'd have some funds to be able to do that. But otherwise than that, in my brain, this is just the reserve money we're putting in the savings account so we can offset taxes, not all at once, but we can do some again next year. That's a thought process. It's not like we're spending money. It's just savings account. And there's inflation. We don't know what's going to happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Anyone else?
So what, giving back $800,000 in total in tax relief?
No, 1.4.
You're going to be giving back almost $2 million to offset taxes. We had initially budgeted that we'd be giving 1.7, and it'll be 1.98 million.
Got it now. Got it now.
All right, so Scott put a motion on the bottom. If everybody's good with this, anybody want to read it?
I'll read it. I move to authorize the business administrator to fund the contingency fund in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 198:4-B with funds from the unassigned fund balance from the fiscal year '24 school year in the amount of $1,300,000.
Thank you, Caroline. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, just, I didn't hear a clear understanding of why we bumped it up by $200,000. Again, we took the vote in June of 2024. Nothing's changed that I know of. We're not anticipating new people, we have a lot of things that we talked about that may happen. I understand the unknowns that could occur. But the only thing I'm seeing is, we have an increased amount of money of over-collection of revenue, we had a higher fund balance, and we just want to retain more of it versus what we voted on in June of 2024, which is three months ago. I won't be, I agree, the contingency fund is needed, I absolutely think we all agree with that, I know that we use it for emergency purposes, that's what it's designated for, that's what we've always said to the Budget Committee. I just, I haven't heard a clear need of why we need the additional 200,000, I'll be voting now.
Thank you, Jared. Anyone else? Go ahead, Dan.
In that we have already voted in June, should the motion have anything in it that adjusts that previous vote? Meaning, we're voting again, is the same words as we did in June?
Right.
Except it's got a different amount on it. Is this an amendment? I mean, I don't, I don't remember reading 194:4-B. Do you know what it says, Scott?
Yeah, it just allows you to retain the 5% contingency fund.
Right, but if you do it multiple times, I guess the last one you do is the one that gets covered, but it would also be nice to incorporate it. I don't know whether that's-
I would say it certainly could be an amended motion, and the one thing, I don't disagree with what Mr. Talbot's saying, what's different is the audits happened. So whether we think that there's a need to increase by 200,000 or not, I'll leave that up to the board to decide, but what's different from June is the audits been done, these are now audited numbers, and the number is bigger than we anticipated. That's the only thing that's different.
All right, anything else? We have a motion, we have a second, do we want to amend the motion? Does anybody, Scott, do you feel that we need to?
I don't, I don't think you do. I think it just gives me the authority to, because I have to let the auditors know, and this does that, so.
Okay. All right, so motion second, any discussion? See and none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstaining. So we have one abstention, Denise, and the rest, yays.
No.
No.
I'm sorry, not abstention, saying no. Okay.
We got it.
Sorry about that. You knew what I was talking about. Thank you, Jared. All right, so moving on, go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, so I just wanted to update you-
Oh, yes, Dan.
Opposite the budget transfers? I believe we have a policy on budget transfers, do we not? And even though we gave the authority to make those transfers-
We have to ratify them.
Five thousand and over, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we affirm the budget transfers that were presented to us that were performed over the summer months.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Shane, second it. Any further discussion? Okay, see and none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? We're unanimous. Did you get all that, Denise? All right, moving on, go ahead, Scott.
All right, so in terms of summer procurement, we typically procure or get quotes on a few commodities, one of them is paper. So we did solicit for paper, copy paper, and WB Mason was the lowest price, they have been the incumbent provider five of the last six years, and we use primarily copy paper, eight by eleven, eight by eleven, it's 318 a ream, so that was pretty good. Heating oil, you'll recall that I talked to the board at the retreat, and at the time it was $2.99 a gallon. Watching it, watching it, it was creeping up and up and up, and I locked in at 314 a gallon for this year, we budgeted 350, so we'll take that one. Propane, you'll recall that we're, we buy, we have often bought two years out of future price. So this current year that we're in right now is locked in on an average of $1.71 a gallon. I bought those in four batches, so that's the average. And for the FY '25, '26, our average is going to be about $1.64 a gallon for propane. So again, that's also fairly good. Again, some people ask me, how do we get a price like that? Well, when you're buying hundreds of thousands of gallons, you're getting better than somebody who's only buying 900 or 1,000 for their house, so. So that was, again, good news there. The next one was policy DFA, the investment policy. This is something that is required annually by our auditing firm. Dan brought up a good point in our, in our ANF meeting, and he was asking us about, I think it was the last page of that policy, when it talks about, you know, how we're supposed to monitor our internal controls. And Dan asked, well, how is that done? And I responded that in our audit, which happened a few weeks ago, you did a survey about fraud and potential fraud in internal controls. The treasurer does, does one, our IT director does one, I have to do one, there are numerous, they ask a ton of questions about the checks and balances within the school district in terms of who does what approvals, you know, what's in place. So that's, that would be my response to you. During the audit process especially, is when they hone in on all of our internal types of controls. So with that, there is a need for the board to formally reaffirm policy DFA.
I'll need a motion for that.
I'll motion to reaffirm policy DFA.
Thank you, Caroline. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Ginny, any further discussion? Okay, see and none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? We're unanimous.
And then I did give you, I guess, all 10 pages of that, but the school impact fee account you'll see is on, I think, page eight of that one.
Page 10.
10? It's 10, apologize, it's on page 10. And what you'll note is that after the GHS field renovation project, we did use impact fee funds, we have about $389,000 in those funds, and the first instance in which they expire is almost like four and a half years out. So we don't have anything where we have, we're forced to expend from those. Both the school and the municipality have impact fees, and if they are not spent within six years of being collected, they must be returned to the developer. So I guess we've got time on our side, you know, on that one, and I wasn't sure if there were any questions. You can only use impact fees, by the way, for the expansion, expansion purposes, you can't use it for renovations.
Go ahead, Ginny.
I was wondering, did we ever get an answer whether impact fees will still be collected in Goffstown?
Yeah, they are.
That was affirmative or not?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Ginny. Go ahead, Jared.
Just want to share, are the ones that are labeled that deadline for March and May of this year, did we use those, or did we return them?
Oh, the dates are-
Deadline for use.
What?
First, last column, deadline for use.
Is that the first one?
Yeah, I see March 24th, which is already fired.
Yeah, that's road impact, that's not ours, though. That would be recreation, so I wouldn't know. I don't know the answer to that.
We're on page 10.
We're only page 10.
We're only page 10.
I apologize.
It is 10 pages, but we're only page 10.
We did, we did, we kind of wiped out several pages when we did that project.
But to your point, Jared, the way that this works is if the rec department or the town did not spend those, just as Jack said, that money goes back to the developer.
Right.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know, it's a good question.
But you'll notice, when you look at page 10, our first deadline for use is December of '28. So it's important to know that because we have the property adjacent to Goffstown High School, that allows you to use impact fees to do things like wetlands studying, wetlands evaluation, you can do architecture and engineering, you could do some survey work, site work, development, there's a lot of opportunity to use those funds on the property that we own.
Any other-
In four more years.
Right. Any other questions, comments on the impact fees? All right, so are you all set, Scott?
I just had to, I just wanted to give the board notification on two, two things. We did file a bill with regard to special ed communications, making it, the default would be email versus the US mail, and that bill did pass, so I am two for two, Brian.
I know.
No pressure.
I know. It, it did come out a little different than it went in, though, right, Mr. Gross?
Yeah. Like, we put in a cake into the oven and out came like a turkey. But somebody, like, attached a lot of stuff to the bill, of which we didn't ask for, but it did pass. The other one, the governor vetoed a bill that would have limited the ability of municipalities and school districts to do municipal leases like that EMC project that we just did. So it almost would have outright eliminated it, it got amended, and then it didn't, but there was a lot of ambiguity to it, and then the governors vetoed the entire bill, and I think, I can provide you a copy of it if you want, but, so, you know, we lease, lease purchase like laptops and technology, and we lease purchase obviously this heating, HVAC boiler project and lighting, it would have put a significant damper on that one, so the governor vetoed that. And then the other thing I wanted to let everyone know was that the Joint Loss Management Committee, that's kind of like a safety committee for this, for the SAU, it's comprised of employees and management, and their primary focus is to make sure that folks are safe. And we have a committee that meets every month, and we had an audit, first one, I think, in like five years, Brian, I think it was?
Maybe longer.
Longer. And we passed our audit with flying colors, and Laura Taylor deserves all the credit in the world for that one. She was the chair of, her and Christine Bean, who's a teacher here, were kind of like chair and co-chair of it, and did a lot of work. It's a hundred-something pages of a, yeah, it's kind of incredible, and we did really well on that audit, so I want to give those two the credit that they deserve. That was it.
Thank you, Scott. All right, moving on, Budget Committee, Jared.
Budget Committee, the Budget Committee is doing tours of facilities. Tomorrow they are doing the fire station, starting at 6 o'clock in Parnellville, if anybody wishes to go to that. Hopefully they already cleared, pre-cleared this with you guys for when they're doing the school tours.
Thursday.
Thursday, okay, so they're going to be doing the Bartlett Maple, so starting at Bartlett at 6:00 p.m. on August 29th, which is this Thursday. And then after Labor Day, Glen Lake and the Middle School will be on September 5th at 6:00 p.m., and the High School will be on the 17th of September at 6:00 p.m. These are public meetings, if people would like to see the facilities, if you haven't been there for several years, I will say, but it's an opportunity to see what's been done and changed. Also, some things that are on our CIP that need to be updated, that's the opportunity to go through with the Budget Committee, but everybody's welcome to that.
Great, thank you, Jared. All right, CIP, Jack.
CIP, when? Well, there was a little bit of concern discussed about our lack of big budget numbers, waiting out like we were waiting to do too much stuff until the out year of, what is it, '28, '29, when the school, we put for the school grant, so they wondered why that was. But overall, it was well, well-received, the plans, and a small question by the chair about, about the way they, why they were putting it, why the technology increases were like of a small number. And when he had chaired in the past, that wasn't the way it was done, but rereading the wording of the CIP procedure, that they were put in there correctly, so that went along. But that was probably the biggest things. We wrapped it up.
So you're finished?
One meeting short, and then we present on the first, to the planning board coming up, the first few days of September.
Perfect. Thank you, Jack. All right, CNE, Ginny.
CNE, we, in CNE, at the end of the year, we okayed, we had a really large presentation on the library, made some changes to what was going on. This summer, I had this little thing where I was trying to correct some information online, and I wasn't believed. And then somebody said that they contacted another school board member, and the school board member said that my information that I was trying to give out so that people would know before school started was inaccurate. So I just wanted to let parents know before the beginning of the school year, that in fact, the CNE's did approve for a seventh-grade opt-out slip for the library. So that is, if anyone's looking for it, go on the website page to Mountain View, and it's right there, and it has been there listed since that, we passed that in, I don't know, what was it, May or June?
April, I believe, that was an April meeting.
So my point is, I just wanted to make sure that people weren't calling in on the first day of school to, in clogging up the phones about opting people out, because they thought it was just you could call in and opt out.
Right.
But that would make a disaster for the first couple of days of school. So please, if that's your concern, please use the opt-out form, it's much easier for everybody concerned, and that way, you know, you'll have what you want for your kid.
Great.
And that also includes the opt-in form for our fifth and sixth graders, that also is available on the library website for parents that are looking to have their students access some of those materials as well.
So I just thought if I mentioned it here-
Yeah.
-everybody would get the, the correct information. And CNE, our next meeting is September 16th at 7:00 p.m. at the SAU.
Great, thank you, Ginny. PNC, Nicole.
Yeah, we met this evening, and we had a few things on the agenda. As you might recall, from the retreat, we did not do the full website overhaul that we were hoping for, but the IT team has been able to update us to the newer version of the platform we already have, which needed to be done, because the old one was no longer being supported. So they anticipate cutting over to the new site in the next few days, there may be a few tweaks that still need to be done, they're currently migrating some content and whatnot, but, so there will be a slightly new look and feel, and we will look at possibly continuing improvements over the coming year.
Nice.
We did have a few people, Greta, Jack, and Ginny, and I think maybe Caroline stopped by at National Night Out over the summer. From what I've heard, we had some good conversations, there was one person that was very excited about maybe starting an alumni group for Goffstown, another person that was excited about possibly integrating AI more into education here. So overall, positive night at National Night Out. And then we spent the rest of our time talking about how we might be able to be a little more proactive in some of our community communications. We came up with the idea that as a committee, we would start putting together some ideas, like an editorial plan, if you will, about some things that the community may appreciate, some more information or education on, things that we can create, a quick video or a quick, you know, written communication about. So things like possibly how public comment works, what the budget process looks like. So our goal is to come up with some more formal ideas and processes around this for our next meeting, and then bring it to you guys for approval, but we're really thinking about how can we start communicating more proactively so that we can hopefully address some of the concerns around communication. And that may or may not impact what we do with the three things video, so that's in play as well. But we'll be coming to you with some more information about that. And we also had a quick discussion of mission vision, but that's further on the agenda, so we'll save that for then. Next meeting is the 9th of September, coming up, 6 o'clock before this meeting.
September 9th? Oh, okay, yeah, right, we're still in August.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Nicole.
Had me doubting myself.
All right, policy review, Shane.
Thank you. We've not met over the summer, but we will meet on September 16th, which is a Monday, at 5:30 at the SAU.
All right, thank you, Shane. Superintendent's report, Brian.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Well, good evening everyone. Wanted to share a few updates. We had a very positive, productive extended school year program this year. It was busy. We had a lot of kids. We had a lot of staff. I'd like to thank all of our teachers and all of our support staff who worked this summer during our ESY programs. We've had lots of great professional development. Mrs. Kohler's been busy with our new teachers. Today she had two full rooms doing math training, so there's been a lot of great, great work that's been done this summer. I want to remind parents, and Mrs. Kohler's going to make sure that I get this exactly right, first day of school is September 3rd. I want to remind everyone that Tuesday, September 10th is a teacher workshop day due to the primary. So the primary election in September and then we'll have, we'll talk about the general election as we get closer to November. I wanted the board to know I approved an out-of-state field trip request. Our new football coach here at the high school wanted to participate with a school down in Massachusetts and they went down and did a scrimmage. I did approve that. I wanted to ask the board if you're open to this. We have a number of out-of-state field trip requests and we have a number of overnight field trip requests that you approve every year. What I'd like to do is bring a list of all the ones that we approve every year. So every year, we know we have student council, we have model congress, we have a few of these that we do every year. And if the board is amenable to it, I'd like to bring it as one swoop. So for example, every year in the fall, the field hockey program goes down to Massachusetts, they go to watch a college field hockey game. They've been doing this for a long time. Instead of coming to you, asking your permission for that every year, I'd like to group all of them and bring kind of like one sheet that has all the typical ones that we do. And then if anything was outside of that, we would bring that to your approval. So that's something I think might be a little more efficient than the way we currently do it. We received a report back from the New Hampshire Education Department for both Goffstown and New Boston. Were found not to have any issues with what's called disproportionality. This is a statistical review that the Special Ed Department does where they look at and make sure that you don't have too many students in particular categorical areas. It's really more of a statistical analysis, but we passed that. We received communication back. The board will recall that we requested a waiver for the meal requirement for preschool and kindergarten children. The board may recall that I had multiple calls in and emails into the department and didn't get a response. We finally heard back. We have rescinded our waiver request in working with the commissioner. We were found to be compliant with that requirement and Megan Bizarro, our Food Service Director, has worked to formalize a snack program that meets the requirements for the state, so that has been taken care of. So again, one of the many things that we need to continue to be thankful to Megan Bizarro who does such a great job. So the Department of Ed, Education Department surprised us this summer with a new platform called Khan Amigo that is affiliated with Khan Academy. That might be something that you've heard of before. The state has approved an over $2 million project to buy this platform called Khan Amigo, which is an AI embedded tutoring platform, artificial intelligence tutoring platform, that the state has bought for all public schools, all homeschool students and all students attending private schools. And it is free for one year for all students in the state in grades five through 12. We have decided not to participate in this program and let me give you the short version of why. The first thing is, a one-year project like this would require us to be budgeting for this, for next year, before we've even implemented it. So I don't feel comfortable doing this. We did a preliminary cost estimate and we believe it's going to be in the $40,000 range. And to, given that we're already on a default budget, to come in with a $40,000 request to continue a program that we have no idea what it's going to include, I wasn't comfortable with. I did recommend to the state, instead of paying for it for all kids in grades five through 12 for one year, do this for high school kids and pay for it for two years. Two years would get people interested. Two years, we could implement it, we could evaluate it and then budget for it next year if we thought it was a good program. So anyhow, there's a lot of information available on this platform. We are still doing tutor.com, so we still have that platform available and that is with a real person. So tutor.com is, it's a chat feature, it's live time and it's all recorded and very safe. But that is another platform that the state pays for. We will be staying with that and not going forward with the Khan Amigo platform. I think it's an interesting idea. There's one school that has been using Khan Amigo and that's Pinkerton Academy. They did a pilot last year with their ninth grade students and they did have good results. They liked the platform. So this could be something that we look at in a subsequent year, but it felt like, it didn't feel like the right time for us to be doing this and budgeting for something with such a high cost when we don't know anything about the platform. So that's that. We have been looking at our class sizes and our enrollments. We're watching Maple Ave very closely. We'll come back at your next board meeting with enrollment numbers of what we start the school year with. Our first grade numbers are the ones that we've been concerned about. In addition to some of the other grades at Maple Ave, our first grade numbers are under 20. So some of our older grades are a little higher, but we're continuing to watch those very closely. The board will recall that I had talked last year about the ED 306, the so-called minimum standards. We had a presentation where Mr. Bermonte and his group came in and did a presentation for the community on the ED 306 series and the minimum standards. The state board has approved those standards. So this board will recall that I offered public comments at the state board, raised, I've raised a number of issues as have other people, but irrespective, those standards have been approved. They are moved on to the Joint Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules, so that's the next step. I would anticipate them being approved. So there's a lot to unpack in this revised version of the minimum standards. I will share the same concern I shared last spring and the same concern that I shared with the state board. There is a purposeful lowering of what the state is responsible for and somebody like me who is skeptical believes that the reason for that is so that the state does not have to pay for an adequate education. Maybe I'm wrong on that, but I don't think so. But anyhow, that's moving forward. The board will also recall that I talked about a requirement that we had to present students and families with the FAFSA, which is the Federal Application for Federal Student Aid. That law has been repealed. So the law required us to give information and have parents sign off that they've received that before we could give a high school diploma. I did share with the board that I would not be denying anyone a diploma over this topic, but anyhow, that law has been repealed. So the new law requires schools to make information available to families, which we already do, so that's great. There's an ongoing issue with bus transportation in the state with districts that use the vendor first student. You might have heard that there's a potential strike looming. I just want to remind the board and the community, we do not use first students. We use, we use Goffstown Truck Center, which is STA, Student Transportation of America. So that strike and the potential of a strike does not impact us, so we wanted you to be aware of that. Bog Road, we're going to talk about that a little further down on the agenda, so I'll skip that. I wanted to let the board know that there was a community information session that was hosted this week on Tuesday, or excuse me, last week on Tuesday by James McKim, who is a local Goffstown resident, community member. And I did want to let the board know that this is not a school-sponsored endeavor. This is not a partnership with Mr. McKim. I actually haven't even spoken to Mr. McKim in several years. So that session was held last Tuesday. Mr. McDermott did attend that session to listen and to see what was being said. But I wanted to let the board know because there's been some inquiries about these sessions. These are not school-sponsored and we have had nothing to do with any of the planning or any of the objectives or outcomes of this group.
Brian, they did tone down the advertisement a little bit. It just says kind of like down at the bottom, mentions Goffstown schools that they're talking about, but it doesn't have the big SAU in the middle of the whole thing saying, you know, we're talking about it. So I think your talk worked.
Well, and I would again offer, I don't know, in speaking with Mr. McDermott, I know some of the people who are participating, but no one has communicated with me. So if this group would like to talk to us, we're here. We're here. I wanted to give an update that GTV has hired a new technician, Emily Van Sickle. I got it right? Van Sickle. I'm trying so hard to learn that. So we're looking forward to working with her. Mrs. Kohler and I actually were in the studio a week or two ago and had the chance to meet Emily and to work with her, so we're excited for her to be part of the GTV family. And as this is our last meeting before the kids come back, we are so excited for our kids to come back, to get the energy going and can't wait for the school year to get underway. So I would stop there. Sorry for such a long report and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. Thank you.
See you none. Thank you Brian. Alright, move it. Go ahead Dan, I just see your hand.
Well, I didn't know if now's a good time to try to slip in the Technology Committee as part of the
Oh, yes!
Committee reports?
We should put it on the list.
Yes!
It would be helpful. We now have a committee, right Rheta, Jack, Ginny in reserve?
Go ahead Dan, IT Committee.
We, I, we're going to come with the official schedule next time, but I think we're going to meet on September 18th, which is a week in a day, or two days after. We're going to try to meet on a Wednesday. Rheta came up with a grid schedule, every other month, two days after the school board meeting, but unfortunately because the first meeting would be the day after the primary, I'm going to be in Concord for a good amount of that time, likely helping with the return of votes. So Mrs. Moore had a good suggestion that we move it a week and I think it's a good one if you guys are okay with that. Okay, from four to five because the administrative staff will be Stephen Borget, who will be giving us all kinds of cool input. You guys are going to be excited.
So excited. Yeah, go ahead.
Four o'clock sounds good, I think, right Rheta?
Yeah, I'll see if I, I've got a meeting right until four, but I'll see if I can get that.
On the 18th?
Yeah. It's fine. I live like, I could run really fast.
We'll do a very long introduction.
There you go.
And if I could just say, I didn't come up with the schedule, I just mapped out what Denise suggested. Because I had to see it in a calendar format, but it worked.
Awesome. Thank you Dan.
I apologize, I have one more thing. I neglected to mention, in your packets, you should have the big master list of all the facilities-related, technology-related projects. This is multiple pages. I didn't plan on reading or going over this. I just wanted board members to know that it was in your packet, so thank you.
Thank you Brian.
And if I may?
Yeah.
It's nice to have read that, to see all the projects that our approved plan was getting done.
Yep.
Over the summer.
Yep. We're doing the work that the board asked us to do.
Right. Alright, so moving on, old business, approval of draft mission, vision statement. It's in your packet, was also in your email. Nicole?
Yeah, so you might recall, you may not, because I didn't until I read the minutes, but we did not have this in our packet at the retreat.
Right.
So it's been a little bit of a long time in the, in the works here. Hopefully you've all gotten a chance to read it, but again, it was basically that we were trying to eliminate the separate school board mission, vision and just have one cohesive mission and vision for the district slash the board that supports the district. So some of the things from the school board one, we just removed altogether because they're already reflected in policy. Anything that we felt was important and not reflected in policy got added to this draft. So now's the time to bring it up if you have any concerns, otherwise we're hoping to get this approved.
Go ahead Dan.
I have no problem with the vision and no problem with the mission. I would like every guiding principle to go through the PRC committee before making it an official document of this particular board, because I think that's where it gets vetted. Because guiding principles are our policies. And putting out guiding principles, we're saying these are our policies, in my mind. I'm not in favor of guiding principles with a mission and a vision.
I think with the exception of one, these have all existed already. We're just continuing them on.
Anyone else?
I think I said, I said this at the retreat, the guiding principles are not policies. And it really is the, more of a philosophy of how we go about thinking about our mission and vision. So it's getting into, they're just principles and so there's no, there's no policy to adhere to. It's just our, our statements of how, how we perceive the work that we do.
We did actually remove, we removed some that were reflected in policy, actually.
So in many missions and visions, the guiding principles are included just as a way to think about the work that we do. Because otherwise, the, you know, the mission and vision are really pretty broad. So it's giving some meaning to what it is that we do. Or that we think about. So there's nothing binding about the principles. It's just a further extension. That's, that's my perspective.
Thank you Rheta. Anyone else? Go ahead Dan.
Well, if I may, I don't agree with some of the verbiage that is being used in the guiding principles. I'm not sure I want to belabor this because I could go on for a long time. I don't think I have a majority on the board to change anybody's mind. I don't think it's our job, just for a little one, to create good global citizens. That's not our job. We're to educate and do things like that, but I don't see that as a guiding principle for us. It's just one of them.
Anyone else? Go ahead Ginny.
I think this has been around and looked at an awfully lot over the past, I don't know, two years.
At least two years?
And I'm okay with it.
Thank you Ginny. Anyone else? Alright, well if anybody's ready, you can make a motion to accept the vision, mission and guidance principles.
I'll make the motion to accept the vision, mission and guiding principles as listed in our draft.
Thank you Ginny. Do I have a second?
A second.
By Rheta. Any further discussion? Okay, see you none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstaining. Alright, so we have one no and rest yes. Thank you, yay! Alright. So in our schedule, you guys saw this, at our retreat is the school board meeting dates. I noticed this year, we, the guys added if needed, there was a couple of times last year we canceled meetings because they were right after vacation or, right? So it's been clarified a little bit more. So if everybody's okay with this, we do need to make a motion and approve it. Oh, sorry Nicole.
Yeah, so it looks like we also moved to one meeting in March and May and I'm all for reducing meetings if we don't need them. My only concern would be that sometimes these run long anyway, so would want to make sure we're not here till 11 or 12 on that one other meeting.
Yeah, why was one?
Well, I think the March is tricky because of the election, so you have to, you have to provide time for the opportunity for a recount. It's, that's why.
The way the Mondays fell and the same thing with May?
Uh, no, not May.
It looks like those are the ones that fall after the vacations.
Well, yeah.
Is that after the vacation?
Yeah.
Okay. April.
So just being careful that whatever that one meeting is, isn't like six hours.
Exactly. I agree. And if we have to, if we find that one meeting is getting full, to add?
Yep, no problem.
Anyone else?
I think one of the things that also will contribute to whether we need them or not, or it's what's happening in the subcommittees. And sometimes we're trying to move things forward. So I think that's just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, that's true.
The subcommittee needs to, you know, keep an eye on what the schedule is, and if there's something important that needs to move forward sooner than later.
Right, yeah, true. Anyone else? All right, so we'll need a motion if everybody's good to accept this.
I'll make a motion to approve the 24, 25 Goffstown School Board meeting dates as presented.
Thank you, Shane.
Dates and times.
Thanks, Shane. Yes, perfect. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Caroline, any further discussion? Go ahead, Dan.
One question again.
Yeah.
Why are we only having one meeting in March again?
Must be how the election is.
The election is the 11th, right? The first Monday's the third.
So we would meet the third.
You can always meet before. There's no issue meeting before.
No, because we always, I, yeah, because I, we didn't cancel it last year, did we?
No. No.
I can't remember.
We usually have one, not the day be, well, sometimes it's the day before the election.
Yeah, we have policy.
Yeah, but this is a week before the election.
Yeah. So we could meet March 3rd.
So would the board like two meetings in March?
Yeah. I'm good with that. Are you guys good with that?
All right, so if we, we're gonna do the, you would want the other meeting in March prior to?
That's March 3rd, and then March 17th is the Monday immediately following the Friday on the 14th for any recount requests to find out whether board members would or would not be sitting at a 17th meeting.
So would the board like to meet on March 3rd?
That would be the first Monday.
Are we adding one or switching it?
We're adding.
Yeah, it's the, it would be the normal twice a month Monday, first Monday and third Monday.
So are we gonna run into a problem though, where the March 3rd falls after February vacation?
That's probably why.
That's what I was guessing.
That was the question.
And that's probably why there was no March 3rd.
So why don't, can I, can I recommend, why don't we add it and just put if needed?
If needed.
Just like the rest of these dates. And if we get there and we don't have pertinent business that needs to happen, or to Reta's point, there might not be subcommittee work, and we can always cancel it. I don't think anyone's gonna be heartbroken if you didn't have to go to a school board meeting.
Right.
Except for Mr. Gross.
I don't recall if there's a second to my motion, but if there was.
There was.
Okay, so I will amend my motion to reflect the addition of the March 3rd meeting date if needed.
Okay. Caroline?
That's fine.
And Caroline agrees. All right, any further discussion? All right, see you none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you. All right, Bog Road Development.
We just saw the curiosity. I know we already approved this.
Yeah.
Did we normally do Monday, Tuesday for budget prep?
No.
So what's the rationale on that one?
Usually Monday, Wednesday.
There's a conflict on Wednesday. I think it's a New Boston meeting.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
That, okay. I knew there was a reason, I'm just curious.
Are those Tuesdays?
And then Tuesday, Thursday.
Are those Tuesdays okay for folks?
I think it was the final conclusion of the bachelorette too, but that was, I know they watched that, Dan, so.
All right, moving on, Bog Road.
Okay, so the latest on Bog Road is the development is still not open. So we continue to be concerned about the potential impact of Bog Road. I wanted the board to know a couple of things that we're looking at. So, and I wanna, this, this might not be a popular idea, so I want to put this one solidly on my shoulders. I've asked Mr. Gross to look into the possibility of a shuttle transfer bus to take any elementary students from the Bog Road Development to Bartlett. We have capacity at Bartlett in all grade levels. We have no capacity at Maple Ave in any grade levels. So this is something that will be mixed review for people. But I didn't want anyone, I wanted people to know where the idea came from, and if you don't like it, it was my idea. If you like the idea, then it was Mr. Gross's idea. I'll, I'll throw him that one. But at this point, we're, we're obviously concerned about Maple Ave. So Scott, we haven't heard anything else, right? There's no other update from the planning department or anything?
No, I haven't heard anything from, from them at all on Bog Road.
Jack, you, you might know something?
There is a new contractor who's taking over the project and gonna bring it up and running. Believe it's gonna be held to the same.
And push it over the finish line.
And push it over the finish line and be held to the same standards and.
Have you heard anything on timing, Jack?
Not on timing.
Okay.
It's just that the signs been changed and they fenced off the road. So someone has gone in there and started up doing something as opposed to the last few months where it's just kind of ghosted.
So, um, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So there's, it's not open at all. Nobody's leased or anything, bought anything. Yeah, okay, just making sure that anybody going into that development, like, know that that's what the situation was.
Yeah, no buildings are even completed.
Yeah, they're not.
No CO.
There's no CO, right?
There's no certificate, certificate of occupancy. None of that's happened.
Right. Dan?
So parents sometimes move to a community because of the school that they believe their children would attend. This would be an anomaly for what they would think? Is that more of a question? Because Bog Road would, had we had capacity, go.
Accurate, that's accurate.
Okay, so is there something you think we should do or say to make it more public, to let people know that we have no capacity at Maple Ave? So anyone coming in with school-aged children between first and fourth grade would be going to Bartlett.
And legally?
So that they're, they're not, there's not surprise and all kinds of bad publicity might happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, and again, I think if there are people who are, these are renters. So it's important to remember, these are people renting.
Yeah.
If you are renting because you believe your child is going to Maple Ave, I would welcome them at Bartlett and say, we have much smaller class size. I think you'll be very happy.
Yep. Amen.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, we couldn't, we, we looked at a couple of other scenarios. We looked at the ability to do like a transfer bus for certain grade levels if we had capacity between Maple and Bartlett. It's just impossible. So at, at this time, the thinking is to make a dedicated bus stop, take any elementary kids straight to Bartlett and straight home. Now, the Truck Center is working on this. We don't have confirmation that this is a possibility. But this seemed to be one of the best options from my perspective. So any option that, you know, puts more kids in classrooms at Maple Ave that already have 22, 23, 24 elementary kids, when across town, I have way less.
Go ahead, Jared.
This is just for this fiscal year. This is gonna be for prior fiscal years. So like, next year, Bog Road most likely will go to Maple. This is only for if occupancy happens this year.
Yeah, so I, I wanted to pitch this to the board as a concept to see if there was, if there was interest and support for this. And I think we'll flush this out a little further. We would have to cost out. I would assume that there would be an additional cost associated with this run. I don't know if it could be, you know, kind of taken in with our current fleet. So we'd have to figure a little more of this out. I think it would be for one year, but I think that we would have to be open to the idea that it could be multiple years, you know, as this bubble goes through Maple Ave.
Go ahead, Reta.
Um, I, I had a similar question. And I think, given the circumstances, and if it's gonna happen during the middle of the year when things are up and running, that that might be a really good solution. I'm, I am concerned about long-term, if this makes the most sense. Because when you're in a community, you're friends with your neighbors, and you're going, you're participating in activities, and all of a sudden, if all these, just these students, it doesn't seem like a long-term plan. And I think we have a real issue that probably won't be solved this year around the elementary schools, that we need to find a better solution. And I think just targeting one development may not be a good strategy, but it's a great way to think about it until we can figure out a, a longer term.
Yeah, I, I agree, Reta. And, and I believe all of those things. I want kids to go to school with their, their neighborhood friends. I, I want all of those things. But this is an incredible hardship that we find ourselves in. And I think that unfortunately, we're gonna have to make a series of difficult decisions. So I, I, again, I think we don't have to make any decisions right now. I'm not asking you to make any decisions now, but I think that the board should know this is the direction that we're exploring.
Caroline, have your hand up.
I like the suggestion. I do have similar questions. And we have, you know, obviously, this is the development we're talking about because it's the one that is about to be finished and could potentially have occupants affecting our schools. But we have more developments coming up, being proposed, that would be in the Maple Ave District. Those are not rentals. Is it different because this is rentals? Would you not be able to suggest it if it were single-family homes? I don't know. At the same time, I've always struggled with kids go together to Glen Lake for one year, and then they get separated for four years and go to two different schools. They make friends that go to that other school, not realizing that friend is gonna go to another school. And I, and it's unfortunate that that happens, and it happens in a lot of districts. But at the same time, you know, you can maintain the friendships and they're not too far away. So I like that they're together for that one year at Glen Lake. There's some really nice friendships that are made, no matter where they live. And it's nice that they come back together years later at Mountain View, so there's that.
So just one piece that I would add. What else did you consider? Redistricting.
Yeah.
So that's it. So if not this, you know, the next proposal would likely be more complicated.
Shane?
So I had, thank you. I had the same exact concern that Dan had, as far as people move to a certain place to go to a certain school. But I know that with our space issues, we need to be creative. And we would by far not be the only district that gets creative in moving kids around. So that kind of is what it is.
And it's important to know, we offer the same programs.
Right.
These are the same programs. They're using the same instructional materials. The teachers have the same trainings. The, these are, these are comparable programs.
Right, and it also does provide the opportunity for us to, I think, I don't think it's accurate, but I think there is a perception that Maple Ave is the better school in the district. I just think that's the perception. And I think that this is a good way for us to say, like Brian said, we offer the same programs at both schools, right? Both schools offer a quality education. The current principal at Bartlett is the former principal of Maple Ave, right? So there's a lot of continuity between the schools. I just think there's a perception that that isn't the case. And then with what Reta was saying as far as, you know, the long-term solution, I was gonna say exactly what Brian said, with a medium to short-term solution, do we redistrict them? And because we have extra space at Bartlett, we have no space in Maple Ave. So do we just change some lines around? Which is a bigger issue.
And, but it's important for the board to know, if we went down that road, how would I do it? I would look at the map, I would look at kids, and I would go development hunting. I'm, I'm just being nothing but really direct. I'm gonna go look for developments that I can make the numbers work. So there, there will be winners, there will be losers. People do not like redistricting. So I thought that this was kind of an intermediate step. I recognize that this one development is being impacted. Those people may not be real happy about it. But congratulations, welcome, welcome to Goffstown, and you're welcome because now you have a class size of 15.
Right.
Instead of 26.
I think we all know that the long-term solution is that we need to do something bigger. But we need to put a Band-Aid on a bullet hole or a.
Nicole had her hand up.
Yeah, just generally, I agree with everybody as far as, you know, short-term solution, fine. I do want to make sure that we're not saying, oh, they're just rentals, let's do this. Because to Caroline's point, we have that Acorn Road Development, 46 single-family homes going in in the next couple of years. So if we're going to treat this development like that, are we also treating that development? And I want to make sure that we're not treating them differently because they're rentals, so.
Thank you, Nicole. Go ahead, Jack.
That's online, right? On 114.
Yep, that one too.
Two that are going in besides that.
Oh, and Bernard Grove.
Yeah, right, right across from the Animal Rescue League, I would call it, depends how long you've been here. North Point Roofing, that's who's in there now. By the car wash. So that's 40 houses. And then if you add another 40 on Acorn, top of, right, 80 and 70 something on Bog Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have challenges, and it's important for the board, as, as well aware, but for the community. And we still don't have full-day kindergarten. We are down to one of the handful of school districts that don't have full-day kindergarten. And that does not appear anywhere on the horizon for us. So we recognize it, a lot of challenges. We have an entire school worth of kids in portable classrooms. But we're full of hope. We're full of optimism, right, Mrs. Kohler?
We are.
We're gonna have a wonderful year.
Yes.
We're gonna be cozy.
All right, is there anything else on Bog Road?
That's it.
Okay. All right, new business, Mountain View Middle School FACS program changes.
So let me tee this up, and then I'm gonna hand it off to Mrs. Kohler. Uh, we received notice that our FACS, which is Family and Consumer Sciences, teacher, who was a, a great teacher for us, unfortunately took a job in another school district, and we were unsuccessful in replacing that position. So that serves as the catalyst for what Mrs. Kohler is about to share.
So the middle school is going to be bringing a new course to CNE at our next meeting in September. There is no programming around that come, that you come out with a degree in Family and Consumer Science anymore. It hasn't been for quite some time. With our last hire in Family and Consumer Science, we struck gold and were able to find someone who was willing to go through the alternative certification process for that position. So like Mr. Bulkey mentioned, we did try to hire, we did not get one applicant for that position. So we took this as an opportunity to look at our Unified Arts curriculum. And we are bringing a proposal to CNE for a digital literacy course instead. So what we'd like to do is take those Family and Consumer Science standards.
Which are in the minimum standards.
Which are in the minimum standards. And we are embedding them into some of our other courses. For example, all of the healthy cooking that was part of Family and Consumer Science, we are putting into our health program in seventh and eighth grade. So when she's studying nutrition, healthy cooking is going to be a part of that. So we found a creative way to make sure that we're meeting the standards in offering this new course as well. In this course, and it's for seventh and eighth graders, it's seven weeks during both of those years, we're proposing that we would be going over a lot of digital tools, basic software, keyboarding skills, a lot of things that we feel that our students are lacking. We'll also do a section on internet safety in digital citizenship, effective online research, and then an introduction to coding as a part of that as well, which is something that we're not currently doing at the middle school. And then in eighth grade, keeping that Naviance, which is our career exploration program that we've used for many years at Mountain View and at Goffstown High School as a part of that, which will include, you know, applying for jobs online in a digital world, personal finance, stock markets, and then coding too as part of that as well. So I just wanted to mention it to the board because, like I said, we are bringing it to CNE on the 19th. And it will be, they will go over where all of the standards are going to be met in different areas, and then what we brought to this course. For this course, we do have a certified digital integration specialist who's been hired for it. So they are certified to be able to teach this course. So like I said, more to come because it is coming to CNE. And then we'd be happy after, if it is approved at CNE, to bring it to the full board for a presentation as well.
Go ahead, Dan.
Can you expand a little bit on the term coding? Because I know it means something to me, and I'm not sure if it's the same thing.
Basic coding, I guess is, Dan, I'm, if I'm not doing.
Computer, computer programming?
Yes, yes.
Coding?
Basic programming for computers, yes.
It is the thing.
And that is not.
A little stymied that we would kind of throw that in there because it's not for everybody.
It's not, but we're trying to give an introduction. We feel that somewhere that we kind of miss at the middle school level now, in trying to set some students up to look at that as perhaps a career path, when we do have some offerings here at the high school.
Sure.
So we're excited about it.
What I'm, I'm excited too, but I'm not excited for those who wouldn't do well with it and get totally frustrated and they're getting graded on something that just doesn't click.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Dan. I think we have a, a teacher that's been in the district for a long time, who was a former sixth-grade teacher, who has taken on this role. And she's very creative, she knows how to differentiate, the kids are gonna get excited. And she's very creative, she knows how to differentiate, the kids are going to get excited. So I'm very hopeful. I think this is going to be a really nice move for the middle school.
So just a clarification. So it needs to still go to CNE in September.
It does.
And then they have to approve it and then it has to come to us. So maybe the end of September, October, if this is approved, when are you thinking of implementing it? And then you already hired someone.
We did, so we...
So what happens if we don't...
We're being proactive.
We're implementing it now.
Yes.
So we're, just to be clear, school is opening next week, this is happening. I think if the board wasn't comfortable with the presentation at CNE, we could talk about doing something different. But we've got school starting next week, so we're going.
Yeah, and please know if we would have had more notice about the vacancy, we would have come to the board with this prior. This wouldn't have been something that we would have waited until right before school starts.
And this was something that we knew was a possibility. So when we knew that this teacher might not be with us, we started thinking about what would a new program look like. So this was something that was being discussed.
Nicole?
Yeah, I was just hoping out, we have budget for all of October too, so I don't know how much discussion. Would that actually come up in October or is it going to be November by the time?
Right, yeah, I don't know. I mean, if CNE, when do you see CNE? September 16th?
The 16th.
So we have another board meeting after.
Not in September.
Oh, we don't? We don't have another one in September?
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we have another one in September.
No, just one.
Just the ninth.
Oh, the ninth, that's right, because of, okay, so you're right, Nicole, it wouldn't be until October.
We will still have regular business to do in October.
Okay.
So it won't just be all budget all the time. We will still have other, other business-related items that need to happen.
Is everybody okay with this? I mean, I trust you guys, but I guess I'm a little concerned that CNE hasn't seen a program that we're starting out the door. I mean, it sounds like a good program, don't get me wrong, but we're backwards a little bit.
I think, I agree we're backwards. We didn't do this because this was our desired process. We did this out of absolute necessity.
I get that.
And I think the board and I think CNE will be impressed with the packet and the presentation. They've done a really nice job outlining the program, identifying the curriculum strands. There's a lot to it. So I think that when people see the presentation, I think they'll be impressed.
Yes. Reda, did you have your hand up?
No, I was going to say what you just said about it, it sounds like a very relevant topic and curriculum.
Yeah.
In the, in the course and I was excited to hear about it, it's like, wow, this is all great stuff at the right time.
Right.
This was a big truckload of lemons and we chose to make lemon gelato, which is very good.
So would it be reasonable to, after CNE, this presentation, that you send it to the rest of the board so that we can see it before the next meeting?
Yep.
If CNE recommends it, does that seem reasonable?
Be good with that, Wendy?
Absolutely, so I can do just like I did with the handbooks. I didn't wait till right before. I gave them to you in advance so you could see it and formulate questions, so I absolutely can do the same thing.
Yeah, as long, you know, CNE, we trust CNE to vet it and then...
And it's always helpful to be able to look at that and study it and then, then you know what the thoughts are.
And middle school administration will be present, so...
Yes, Ms. Milligan and Mr. Lewis will be presenting at CNE.
Great.
Yes.
Awesome. Anyone else? All right, moving on, educator apprenticeship program.
Yeah, so in your packets, you should have something that looks kind of like this with a memo from Kate on top followed by kind of an infographic. So let me talk a little bit about what this program is. This is a program that the state is doing to try to continue to encourage people to get certified to become teachers. So this program is for full-time paraprofessionals and this program allows them to use their work experience and then to participate in, in courses. This, this covers the cost of everything. This is, I believe, free to the people who participate and at the end of it, they come out with a degree and a teaching certification. So there are a number of school districts that are participating in this. We had concerns, so you'll see in Kate's, in Kate's memo, we had some concerns because there's a required internship. And we had concerns, we support the idea, we want more people coming into the field of education, but there were concerns about how we would cover the internship. And we have worked those out with Mary Ford, who is the person overseeing this program. She used to be the State Special Ed Director at the Department of Ed years ago. She's a very well-known entity, we work closely with her. And satisfying that internship piece so that there's no potential exposure to the district, we felt good about moving forward with this. I don't know if we'll have people participate, I don't know if this is one person or this is eight people or this is 20 people, I have no idea. But I know that we can't find teachers, there aren't enough people going into the field of education and if this provides that kind of a pathway to people who are able to get a free college degree and free certification to become a teacher, we were in support of that.
Any questions? Go ahead, Jenny.
This makes me really uncomfortable because this was done with nursing, like what, 10 years ago maybe now, and people who had a BA in whatever subject could take a year and become a B.S. nurse. And in my opinion and a lot of other nurses' opinions, and I think a lot of patients that I have talked to have pretty much said the same thing, that it's made a difference because one year is really not long enough to get all of the technicals, science, anatomy stuff and to really get the kind of hands-on experience you need. I could give like a jillion different examples myself as a nurse that I found that were like, oh my lord, you guys, you really need to do some of this before you're thrown in. And so this seems to be like the very same program. And so if we were to be in this type of a program, it looks really cool on the outset, but I'm not sure what, if they really will get the kind of background that we want our teachers to have and go into classrooms, because there's so many different things that happen in a classroom that you can't really just, you know, go into a classroom for a little bit of a time and all of a sudden know how to deal with kids, to deal with parents, da-da-da-da, all of the things that you need to do. So it makes me nervous. And I think if we were to go with this, that we would need a lot of hands-on, a lot of mentoring, you know, we have the leadership in the mentoring programs now, but these teachers would just need a whole lot of extra hands-on stuff that it wouldn't be as easy as just slipping somebody in place if we really wanted to have quality teachers.
I don't disagree with you, Jenny. The, the only piece that I would share is this is designed as like a two-to-four-year process, so this is not something that's going to, nobody's going to come out of this in a year with a certification. I think it's more like a four-year program. And this is designed specifically for people who are working as paraprofessionals. So it's intended that people have some background, they have some knowledge, they're, they're familiar with schools, with what happens. So I, I don't know how good this program will be. I don't know if the, the people who come out of this program are going to meet the standards that we would want to hire and give them a job, but I do know that before the pandemic, if we had an opening for an elementary school job, I'd get 200 applications. Guess how many we get now?
Six.
We're lucky to get six. We're lucky to get six. The landscape has fundamentally changed for public education and when we think about the future needs of a workforce, is this going to be good? I don't know. But all I know is we need teachers now, we're going to need teachers in two years, we're going to need teachers in four years. So...
Where are our paras going to go? You know, we're having trouble with paras now, so if they're all going into this program, who's going to take care of them?
Yeah, we, we actually think that there could be a bit of a recruit, a recruiting element to this because we're participating, that people know they can come and work as a para and be part of this program. We actually think that there might be a little bit of a value. I don't know if that'll play out that way or not, but...
Okay.
I think the other thing is not, not everyone is afforded the same opportunity to become a certified teacher, you know, to get the college education, whether it's affordability or they weren't really directed that way, they didn't have, you know, good role models in their life, so, you know, becoming a para and getting that job and then be given this opportunity sometimes a para is just somebody who is very naturally good in this setting and needs a little bit more of an opportunity to do this. And then the way that it is, you know, advertise the mother's hours, be home with your kids on vacations and snow days, this could bring in a whole group of people who never thought that this was going to be possible for them. And could be a great recruitment opportunity for the future to replace paras and think like, hey, what a good opportunity so I don't have a lot of debt and I can do what I want to do and get paid at the same time, get experience, which is huge. If you're in school in your early twenties for four years and then come out of it, but you're not working in the environment, it's a, it's a huge shift to apply everything and sometimes a culture shock of like, ooh, not sure I really wanted to be doing this. So I, I like, I can see your side to it as well.
Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, and I would, I would think the same thing. I think at the rate that we're paying paras, that it would be a recruitment process that I could come here and get that education and expect to work a few years and have a viable outcome that could lead me to something better. So it might bring more paras in. I'd get a thing for it.
Anyone else? We're good?
Yeah, so if this is something that the board would like us to pursue, Kate listed our next steps. We have not met with, with the unions, we haven't kind of pushed this forward, so we wanted to gauge the level of interest from the board. If this is something that you'd like us to, to pursue, our recommendation would be that we think it's worth trying. I, I don't know, I don't know how fruitful it will be, but I think it's worth giving it the old kind of college try.
Does everybody think, nod of heads, if we're good? Jared, do you have questions?
Well, is there a severability, basically, I'm concerned with bringing people in, they get their certification, they bounce into another school district.
So that's a real, that's a real possibility. By the way, that can happen anytime, but certainly, if, if we're training people, we are potentially training people for jobs that we may or may not have open, they will leave us. So there, you'll lose a para, but maybe you gain a couple of certified teachers as an outcome. But I, I agree, that could be an outcome, Jared, for sure.
The reason why I'm looking at this is, especially with our history and just our school district, we're going to be a recruitment center for training new teachers that are then leaving and we're always going to be in that role of training new teachers that are going to other districts. Not saying that that's what's going to happen.
We're not really experiencing that in Goffstown as much and when we get a little further into the staffing updates, we, we had another good hiring season. We've been able to hire experienced teachers. New Boston has had some new teachers, we've struggled a little bit in New Boston, but that is a, it's a reality.
So I guess my question is, is this going to be like, you know, we're signing an agreement, is it a one-year agreement, two-year agreement? Are we going to be able to withdraw after the two years if it's not being approved for us?
Yeah, I think for us, we haven't gotten quite that far. I think we wanted to gauge the level of interest and then continue to pursue this if this, we didn't, so we didn't want to put a lot of work into this, only to have the board say, eh, we're not so sure this, so we, we didn't put all kinds of work into this yet.
Okay.
Go ahead, Reda.
I'm just wondering if you, if anybody else is doing this, have you gotten any feedback or done any research, including the organizations that are associated with it? Just, just questions, I'll do some digging, but...
Yeah, we've done a little bit of digging. We were provided a list of about a half a dozen school districts that were doing it, including Manchester was probably the largest, closest one. But that, that was our preliminary analysis is there were, there were probably a half a dozen to a dozen districts in the area that were doing it.
Go ahead, Jenny.
I'm just wondering what kind of time and, and money have to go into this program for, on the district, from the district?
So time for sure, it would be, it would be on their own time, so we're not paying people to do the coursework, we're not paying people time to take courses, so it would be after their normal work hours.
Okay. And are there going to be people from, from the SAU that are overlooking this?
Um, no. So we wouldn't have any direct oversight in terms of what the program's doing, the content, the courses. It won't be any of our staff teaching the courses. It's, it's, it's a separate program.
Okay, so no money and no time?
So the only money piece that we were concerned about was that internship. So that after you do the coursework, there was a requirement that you had to do an internship that we couldn't reconcile, how do you do that? You're going to, I need to take a person out of a classroom, I'm now paying them to do an internship and I have to replace them for the position that they left. That was the part we couldn't reconcile and that's the part that Kate's been able to say, we're not doing this unless it works for us. That was the piece, it was the internship that we couldn't figure out. And I don't know what other districts are doing with that. If they're going to pay people to go do it and pay for their replacement, but we didn't want to do that.
Go ahead, Dan.
Does that mean we're not doing that? And so we would, if they wanted to continue a program as a student, they would have to go someplace else?
No, so if you read the first paragraph...
Yeah, I haven't.
Yeah, so this, so the para-to-teacher pathway program with a limited scope to the programs with embedded student teaching, this eliminates the barrier of us needing to pay a paraprofessional during their student teaching portion of the program, leaving a vacant position or paying double for a position. So that was the part that we had to reconcile. Wendy, can you speak more because I think you were involved with a little bit on, on this?
Yeah, I think you did a great job explaining it. They are working, from my understanding, with universities that are allowing them to do small group work that a lot of our paraprofessionals are doing anyways, and then obviously observations, especially thinking about our teachers, our paras, I should say, at like the fifth grade level, who are going between a lot of different teachers that they're seeing different styles and things like that to get that experience in the classroom. So that's my understanding of how they were able to reconcile that, is they were able to basically come up with an agreement with some accredited universities in the area that would make this work.
So it would only be, we would only participate for students, the paras, that the teaching assignment would be their assignment. We're not paying double. So we would only take the people that fit within our needs to do their internship and we don't have to double pay. And if they don't fit, they're out. They're not part of the program here. They might be able to do it somewhere else, but they couldn't do it here.
Heather has a follow-up.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
So the way I'm seeing it in different words is they're modifying their educational program so that the work that a para is currently doing as a para would be credited as their student teaching or whatever they call it.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead, Shane.
So this kind of happens already, but it's usually through a, through college or university, like Snievelle programs like this, Granite State College does do programs like this. So it's essentially a paraprofessional working on a site-based learning plan to seek certification. So I don't see any downside to this because again, this is already happening, with the only upside being that the paraprofessional doesn't have to pay for the college class at the same time as doing their internship. So it's actually beneficial to the para. We may lose people at other districts, that's a real concern, but we also might just scoop those people up if a lot of people leave, so it's like, yeah, take your chance, I guess, right?
Mary Ford worked at Granite State College, so...
When I got my certification, she was a teacher.
Yeah, I'm not real clear and, and the infographic from the state doesn't say that this is affiliated with, with Granite State College, but that's where Mary Ford came from, so I'm assuming that there's a relationship there.
And full disclosure, I started my career in education as a para and I...
I did too.
I did a site-based learning plan.
I did too.
And then certified and then became a case manager, so this is the same thing I did, I just had to pay for classes at the same time, so it's a cool, I think it's a cool opportunity, so.
So is everybody okay with the district moving forward to get more information?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
So just...
And just as a little dis... Just as a little, this almost reminds me a little bit about that relationship we had with Snuke.
Yeah.
A bit, except now it's for the paras.
Yeah, yep, and it's free.
Yeah, even better. I think it was 2,500 a semester last time for the other one.
Even on the staffing?
Okay, so let me start with, there's a lot on the staffing sheet. There's just a lot. So the entire top portion are all notifications. So this includes track changes, this includes teacher assignment changes, this includes teacher transfer or location changes, teacher change and full-time equivalency, leaves of absence, long-term substitutes. And I would again, I can't thank Mrs. St. Clair enough. Every year that she continues to come back, I thank her. So thank you to Karen, as well as one student teacher. So no action required from the board, those are notifications only. For your approvals, I'd like to highlight a few of these to inform the board of what circumstances are, but I really don't want to read every one of these names. So just, I'm going to do it by category. So we have a resignation of our administrative assistant supervisor, Lori Barbaro. We have two nominations, so since the board last met, we have two administrator nominations. One is for Carol Donovan, who is our new assistant principal at Glen Lake School. She is replacing Christine Colburn, who left us. Christine was split between Glen Lake and Bartlett, she has resigned. And Melissa Mazzoni is our new school counseling coordinator or director, and she's replacing Mrs. Lewis, who also left us. So teacher resignations, what do we have, five, five there? And then you'll see corresponding nominations. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, teacher nominations. We have one-year certificate of eligibility authorizations. I want to highlight these three. So these three, and I want to make sure that Mrs. Moran captures in the minutes. These are three individuals that we hired on a one-year certificate of eligible eligibility authorizations. This is consistent with RSA 189:39-B. And in that section, emergency authorization or permission to employ has been expanded from one year to two. There's a part in the statute that talks about the school board shall formulate, and you have some actions of the board. Different superintendents are interpreting this differently, but I wanted to highlight these three individuals that we have on the one-year certificate of eligibility authorizations. When you approve the staffing sheet, this will be part of it. So these are people that are already working with us, that are in these roles. And I just need to highlight that they are in that category. So I just need to highlight that they are one-year authorizations.
Do we need to skip over the administrator nominations until after non-public?
We could. So we left, so there's a couple of things on the staffing sheet that could potentially, the board may want to go into non-public for. So if, at any point, you can do any of these, or you can wait to do some of these if you so desire. I will share that the administrator nominations are well within budget, so there are no financial considerations that the board would need to consider. But I'm going to just keep going by category, if that's okay with the board, and I recognize this is a little different.
Yeah, just stop before you get to the sports.
Okay. Technician, this is the new help desk position. That was the one that we talked about in the spring. And then we have a support staff nomination for speech-language pathology assistant. So any questions that we can answer on the approvals above? Or if there's anything that the board might want to go into non-public to discuss further, we could do that. And then we get into co-curricular and sports nominations for all the fall stuff.
Right, which we can do separate. Go ahead, Ginny.
Brian, what exactly is a one-year certificate of eligibility? Eligible for to be able to teach, to...
Yeah, so it's a particular statute, and again, it's 189:39-B. It allows the school district a little bit of flexibility to hire someone who already has experience but doesn't have the certification that is in that position. So for example, Andrea LaFortune is working on her reading specialist work, but she has been a long-term special educator. She's very experienced, she's been with us. She's in a role that's slightly different than her certification, and we're able to do that for one year and then two. At the end of the two years, you have to have it figured out, though. So that's what we're doing.
So it's almost like alt-four?
A little bit. It's kind of like an alternative pathway.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so out of the nominations, are there any you would like to bring into non-public? Or is everybody good to approve, all of them?
For the administrators, because there's no real salary chart, is there anything in their contracts that are abnormal?
No.
That we should talk about?
Nope, nothing.
What about the technician, is that a, are they in a...
No. So that's not part of the support staff association? This would be in that category of student support specialists, where we have a couple of other folks that don't fit neatly into a category. Those, that help desk position would be there.
And they are within the budget as well?
Yes, yep, yep. We are within budget of everything that's been presented to you.
So is everybody saying, if you're all good with this, we can lump them all together? Because it's resignations and nominations.
Yeah, and actually, if you want me to keep going, I can. The next two sections, it's co-curriculars and sports. And then it's, again, co-curriculars and sports that include, these are both for kind of non-athletics for the entire year. So you've got several pages of nominations for that. And then if I can, before the board takes action on these, under other, on the last page, if you look at the, kind of the bottom of the last page, there are a couple of other pieces. And again, we can talk about any of these in non-public if you would like. The first is an increase rate for our school board minute taker by $25 per meeting, going from $225 to $250. That amount hasn't been increased in several years. So that is a request. We can talk about that in non-public if you would like to. The MOU between the Goffstown Education Support Staff and the District Regarding Registered Behavioral Technician Position is not ready. So unfortunately, we've been working with the GESS, our Support Staff Association, and they have not been able to schedule to take a vote on that yet. And we will bring that to the board after their vote. So we had hoped that that would be ready for tonight, it's not.
Did we not talk about some RBTs?
Yes.
We did.
And budget transfers.
Yeah, so...
And budget transfers, but do we have any individuals?
We have a couple of individuals, and right now, those few individuals are a little in flux because we have not come to agreement with the Goffstown Education Support Staff, yet.
So they can't be hired until?
They're hired. We are going to talk to them and let them know that if there's any adjustment, that we will make it, we will make them whole. There's only a few of these individuals, but we're trying to work with the support staff to get this as part of that contract. Because moving forward, I would anticipate that we would continue to see more of these registered behavioral technician positions. And then the last piece on the, under other, is the apprenticeship program that we already talked about. So that's what's in front of you. We could talk about any of that in non-public if you'd like. We listed non-public under A for compensation, so we can talk about any of those pieces if the board would so desire.
Other than that, we wouldn't need to go.
Other than that, there is no need for non-public. So this would be the only thing for non-public, unless the board had something.
Go ahead, Jared.
Try to ask this question in public then. I know the assistant, sorry, the administrative assistant supervisor was a position that we kind of created last year to streamline a lot of the work that we were doing. Are we opening up that position, or is this going to be a no-longer-supported position?
No, so we wish Lori well. Lori's been with us for a long time, and we were sad to see her go. We continue, we plan to continue with the model. We have already posted it, and I believe we've been, what I've heard, Mr. Gross can chime in, but I think we've been impressed with the applicant pool thus far. So this, we do continue to move forward with the model. Scott, anything to add?
We have interviews tomorrow.
Oh, there you go, tomorrow. So, Mr. Gross, are we doing the non-public that you had wanted to talk about under C? I don't have anything else, it would just be your one thing.
I remember what that was.
Deer in the headlights, Laura. Make you feel bad.
You want to whisper it tonight? I remember it.
Oop, next meeting.
Okay, well...
All right, well, while you're thinking about it, we can at least start approving some of these. Is there any that somebody would want to go into non-public? We can, if anybody has any questions on any of the administration.
That could be public. If everything follows the...
Okay.
All right, so we have two sets of resignations. So why don't we start there, do an emotion to accept the resignations?
Would there be any, someone make a motion for the entire sheet?
If you want, if you can.
If nobody had any reservations about anything.
Yeah, as long as we can get everything incorporated. I don't have a problem with that.
Could we, could we do the resignations and then the approvals?
Sure.
Sure.
I was trying to keep the resignations separate.
We could do that.
Doesn't matter.
It's up to the board.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the 24, 25 staffing sheet as presented.
All right, that's from Shane. Do I have a second?
Second.
From Nicole. Does that cover everything? Any further discussion? See and none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, abstaining, or unanimous? Guys have been busy this summer.
They sure have.
All right, what about the increased school board minute taker?
That's part of the staffing sheet.
Yep, agreed.
That's part of the staffing sheet, that's true? Okay. So any other business that may legally come before the meeting? Go ahead, Jared.
I'm going to go first, I don't know what he's...
You can go first.
Oh, I didn't see you.
I just want to let the board know, I was at an ad hoc impromptu meeting with members of the community from our booster clubs. And they were talking about things related to sponsorships, potential sponsorships, that they might be able to utilize because of multiple funding issues that we're having in the district. I know that we have a policy, and I advise them that we do have a policy about not accepting sponsorships or names or anything along those lines. I do know that they're probably going to be coming before us sometime and start presenting during public comments about some of the, what other districts do for sponsorships on receiving advertisements for funding. Whether, and I said, if you're going to do this, you can't just do athletics. It'd have to be across the board probably to be a policy that also includes non-athletics. So if we want to have somebody sponsor a theater presentation or something along those lines, I asked them to look at other policies from other districts that they might be able to, or we might be able to model and present that to us. So I'm not asking for us to do anything. I gave them to say, this is what you probably need to do on your own time, but we do have a policy. We need to change the policy, and you need to convince the board to change the policy and the reasons why. So I just wanted to present that and let people know that. I wasn't planning, I just got pulled into it, and I'm like, hey, I just want to let everybody know what was going on.
So that's different from the names of companies on like our billboards?
No, it would be similar.
Similar.
It's similar, they're all under the same policy.
I'm glad that you mentioned that, because we were in the same meeting. And, you know, there is an opportunity with, and there are policies out there from other districts who already do this. There are, there is the ability for passive income and having folks, just like you, drive by the Little League fields, and people pay for that, whether the district was interested in doing that or not. And again, as Jared said, this would not just be for athletics, this would be for others. And, you know, I think rather than having all these people come before in public comment, if Jared can go back to this group and say, okay, this is something that, you know, the board will entertain a policy, then it can go through the policy committee. Or have it come to policy.
Well, I was going to send you a video, but like, hey, buddy.
I would want to involve Mr. Gross. So even if this comes to the policy committee, I would ask Scott to have a role in this. I wouldn't want to do any of this without him.
Yeah, because before it goes on an agenda, isn't there, what's the chain that comes to you first?
Yeah, so I mean, people, yeah, we can work through if there's a request, but...
And I don't know if these are the same people, but there's been community members that have talked to me and said the same type of, probably the same thing.
Probably went to you after they talked to me.
Again, I mean, not to put Ginny on the spot, but this is not something kind of new. Because many, many years ago, Coca-Cola donated scoreboards all across the district. Part of that was that Coca-Cola would advertise, you know, on there.
And we appreciate that.
Right. We have the ability to put sponsored panels on the scoreboard. And if we did, it could generate enough money to pay for that scoreboard two or three times over. But we need a policy that would allow that to occur. So I just wanted to share that. And could I segue off of you, because it's the same exact topic?
I just want to let the board know what I was part of, go ahead.
So on the topic of booster clubs, now it's two booster clubs that are, and I was showing this to Nicole, but this whole notion of crowdfunding or asking for donations online, when we, we just looked at this policy, and one of the sentences that it says is crowdfunding fundraisers made by a district employee, student, or parent guardian for any purpose made on behalf of the district is strictly prohibited. They're saying, we're not making it on behalf of the district, we want to do this on behalf of the booster club. It seems gray, I don't have any issues if a booster club wants to crowdfund as a fundraiser. I can't go through our, this policy would not allow it to go through student activity accounts because we oversee that as a district. But I just wanted, if the board is okay with it, you know, I will give these groups that blessing. But it can't be anything where the monies are going through district funds, which student activities does. A booster club like soccer, lacrosse, football, whatever, their monies don't go through our...
So Scott, would they, these groups then, they raise money however they raise money, crowdsourcing, whatever?
Right.
Then they're just making a donation to the district?
Sometimes it's a donation, and sometimes it's a donation of materials. So, so like those guardian caps, those are safety things that football boosters bought. You have soccer folks that are buying warmups and socks and new goals and...
But it's their crowdfunding, not our crowdfunding.
And if that's, I just want to make sure that's the case, because I'm going to give them a blessing on this, but I didn't want, if you have a different opinion on it, then you need to let me know.
I think when we were talking about this, we were mentioning that it's anything with our name on it. And through liability, through anything else that has to do with it. If, the way you explained it, you are a booster club who has your own revenue sources. You do whatever you need to do for your revenue sources.
However you raise the money.
That's the way we understood it.
Nicole? I think this is fine, but the way you just put it, we couldn't have our name. How would they, would you have to put like Goffstown Lacrosse Booster Club on your GoFundMe or whatever it might be? So does that count as the name or...
That's okay, as long as it's, if they're saying that it's the Friends of Goffstown Softball Booster Club, that's okay. They can't say Goffstown School District.
Or Goffstown High School.
Or Mount, or Middle School. They can't do that.
But they also can't use our logos as part of that.
Unless we give them permission, right.
Which if we gave them permission...
Then that money is the water.
We have to also be honest, it's like folks kind of know that, you know, the Wrestling Booster Club is, you know, is the Goffstown Wrestling.
It's affiliated, right, it's affiliated.
And by the way, they have to sign off every year now, I just sent them out like two weeks ago, that they review their financials, they're going to comply with our policies. So we do have some, if they didn't do those, Jared, I wouldn't let them use our logo or do that.
Go ahead, Jack.
So would it just be for like equipment and stuff like that, or could it be like a stipend for an assistant coach or...
No, that's something that we have resisted, Jack. It's a, we have done it in the past, but it is, we are revisiting it because it is a, opens up Pandora's box for us. We have to pay certain wages, and it is problematic.
Well, I was asking.
Yep.
All right, so I know this wasn't an agenda item.
Sorry.
That's okay.
And then the last thing that I was going to share with you was that part of your policy is that we have folks who owe the school district money, and we do on the food service side, and it's substantial for some of them. We have instituted small claims court proceedings on a few families. on a few families. So, just, I wanted you to know that. We have tried repeatedly. I'm talking about well over six to seven letters, certified letters, emails, no replies. And we can't... We don't refuse kids' meals, and some of them have gotten over $1,500. So, we have to do something.
Okay. So, going back to the booster, since you asked the board to okay the policy that they can do their own booster, is everybody good with that, doing their own?
No, it's fine with the consensus. I didn't need a...
Okay.
I just have a question, because it's out of my league. I mean, there's no legal concerns that... I mean, is this just our interpretation or the policy?
No, no. There is... Then, there are other school districts, and it's loosening up, by the way. Like, at first, when this first came out, like, school districts and folks were... They wanted to stay far away from it. It's... According to Cheryl, Prada auditor, she's like, more and more districts are even getting rid of some of these. We do have a policy with regard to districts. So, a teacher can't do a GoFundMe saying, "I want to raise $500 for a printer in my classroom." That's prohibited.
Right. Okay. Go ahead, Jack.
I know my... Where my nephew lives in Arkansas, it's like Tyson High School, like Tyson Chicken has their manufacturing plant. Built us a high school where you can put your name on it.
Right.
And I'm not opposed to that.
I'd like to welcome any poultry companies that are interested in sponsoring a new elementary school in Goffstown to please contact me.
Well, they can sponsor it. They do.
Any competitors of Tyson are welcome. We'll take anybody.
All right. So, everybody's good with what Scott asked, and then what Jared asked? Have him reach out to Scott or Brian to then go forward. Ginny?
I just have one really quick comment that you can bring back. And I went to a couple of basketball games in different communities, and they were on their announcement of the basketball game, throwing in, like, commercials of different businesses. It was really tacky. It was like really tacky that the announcer was saying, "And, you know, Bob Smith just did a three-pointer, and we're so happy that, you know, da-da-da-da, sponsoring this game."
To be sponsored by Tyson Chicken.
Yeah. There you go.
We just want to make sure they pay enough.
So, I would say, you know, nothing like that. If you want to put a sign up somewhere, awesome.
Well, it has to go through policy first.
Exactly. But just my thoughts.
But first, to reach out to you guys.
My last word on this would be, and to please thank the boosters clubs. We can't emphasize enough. These groups are raising a ton of money. They're supporting our kids. Gofftown does not pay for all of our athletics programs. This is mission critical, and we want them to know how much we value them and how much we appreciate them. So, make sure you give them that, too.
Yeah.
They're doing great, important work, and we need them.
Definitely.
Yep.
All right. And is that it? Scott?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? So, no non-public?
No non-public.
Wow.
Motion to adjourn?
By Dan. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
By Jack. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Good job. Thank you, everybody.